Good evening and welcome to the Tuesday, July 19th, Tewksbury Board of Select Board Meeting, excuse me. If you'll join me in standing and through the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, undegraded, indivisible, with liberty infested with sorrow.
Alrighty, so we'll jump right into our first item. 7:00 PM, we have a change of manager for the Marriott Residence Inn at 1775 Main Street. Do we have anyone here for that? No. Okay.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I think all the paperwork is in line, very thorough as usual, some pretty standard stuff. I didn't see any. We had also all the approvals checked out, so I would make a motion to approve the change of manager for Marriott Residence Inn, 1775 Andover Street.
Second for discussion.
Please.
Just really briefly, this is just for the change of manager, it's not for the plan that they have or anything like that?
Nothing.
Okay, thank you very much.
Just for the change of manager.
Thank you. Alright.
Alright, so we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye as well. Any opposed? None, so that passes with a 4-0. Alright, we'll move to the 7:05 alteration of premises application for El Fresca Restaurant, 1768 Main Street.
Mr. Chair, motion to waive the reading of the public notice.
Second.
Absolutely, so we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye as well. That's unanimous, that motion passes as well. Thank you.
Good evening.
How you doing?
Good. I'm George Malonis, I'm here again on behalf of Mark Anglin and El Fresca Restaurant. We're here basically to seek a modification of the premises, which consists of a 12-by-10 storage area near, liquor storage area, near the area that presently serves as shipping and receiving. This is all part of the site reconfiguration that El Fresca and the adjacent market are going through. We ask that the board approves.
Alrighty, yeah, I know this, we saw this a couple months back, you guys did a great presentation on this, had a chance to look through the paperwork, so I'll open it up to the board for any questions.
I have no questions, I just, we only ever come in, we always want to thank you, one of the classiest joints in town, beautiful family, and you treat your employees very well, so I'm happy for you, so, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Ms. Wellman?
Thank you. I just wanted to compliment you and your attorney on the completeness of your package. I know it's a lot of work to put this together, there's a big ask from the town, our expectations are high, and of course with the ABCC as well, as you go through this process, and we appreciate that that's all done, and it's a good example for other businesses. I do enjoy going to your business, and I'm excited to see how this plays out, so, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wellman. Ms. Kravman?
I have no comments, the package is complete, everything seems to be in order.
Alright, only comment I have is glad to see you guys are moving forward with this, echo the sentiment of the board, great establishment, big fan, and wish you guys success on this.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, and with that, I think we-
I'll make a motion to close the public hea- I'm sorry, I don't know if anyone else is-
Yep, I was gonna say, so we'll open it up to the public if anyone that wants to speak on it. I don't see anyone here for it.
Motion to close the public hearing.
So moved, a second.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second to close the public hearing, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye as well, that vote is unanimous, and we will go to, what is the pleasure of the board?
I'll make a motion to approve the alteration of premises for 1768 Main Street.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the alteration of premises, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye as well, another unanimous motion. Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. We just got Mark and Grabs, thank you.
Okay, and we will move on to Eco Auto LLC Used Car Dealer License Class II. This is another public hearing.
Make a motion to waive the reading of the public notice.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second on waiving the reading, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye as well, that is unanimous, that passes. Good evening, welcome, glad to see you guys made it back, it's been quite the process, and I'm glad you guys are working through it. So you guys want to introduce yourself for the record and give us a quick overview of what we're looking at here?
So I'm Al Salas with Eco Auto.
I'm Michelle Salas with Eco Auto.
And we are looking forward to reviving 623 Main Street and cutting the lawn too, we haven't forgotten.
We just got permission from them.
We just got permission from them. This should be the last piece that we need to move forward with the project, we're ready to go, we're very excited. Licensing obviously being a very important part to what we do, but, all that being said, we are looking to bring electric vehicles and hybrid vehicles retailed right at our location, alternative fuel vehicles, charging stations as well, and also servicing electric and hybrid vehicles. We, I talked to, well anyways, we'll get to that, but, all exciting stuff, and that's what we're here for.
Awesome, thank you. And I will open it up to the board for comments, they're on the other side, Ms. Kravman?
The only questions I had, I said the place has been closed a while, inside renovations, all kinds of things going on, you're totally doing a different kind of car dealership of what it seems like what was there before, charging stations, all that's gonna be working and there'll be locations, will those charging stations be open to the public, for all the people to come in to use those things as well?
Definitely, so, they're gonna be open for the public to come in and charge as well, and our first goal is to triple the amount of charging stations in town. So we're gonna go from two, I believe, the way we have now, with our location will be up to eight, because we're putting six in. And over the next three years, we wanna put a total of 12 to 15, depending on what the grid allows.
Okay, no, I think that's, that seems to be the way of the future, I welcome you, and it sounds like a good idea to bring something like that to the community.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Wellman?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Nice to meet you, thank you for coming before us, I'm very excited about your business coming to Tewksbury, and I thank you for working with the town and selecting this community to establish your business. How many jobs do you think you'll be creating?
27, to start.
27, okay, that's great, I love, that's a lot more than I was anticipating, so that's-
Yes, that's a lot of moving pieces to our operation.
What brands of vehicles will you be selling?
So, we are an independent brand, and so we will be able to retail any brand, but we, our focus is exclusively on alternative fuel vehicles, so electric and hybrid period, we'll be selling Rivians, Teslas, all kinds of new technologies that are emerging, we're not really limiting ourselves to the brands, we're more focused on the technology and driving that green energy forward.
I was on a Rivian this weekend, so, and a couple of Teslas, so yeah.
I just ordered one today.
Did you?
Yes.
But I love them.
She just found out.
No, they're fantastic. And then also, there's a, I think Zero is a motorcycle manufacturer that does electric motorcycles.
I love something in a motorcycle.
Yep, see, here we are, we're working together. Zero, yeah, they're interesting, and they go very, very fast, very, very quickly. I'm excited about what you're offering, I'm a big believer in electric vehicles, as we understand more that Europe is banning, you know, internal combustion engines in like 12 years or something like that, that there will be tremendous demand for your business, and others like you, so I'm just very excited, I have commended the town manager and staff in the past for their foresight in installing charging stations in our community, here at Town Hall, and I think at the DPW behind the police department at our library, so it's very exciting to see more coming in, and something I'll be proposing in the future is some rules around multi-unit development, high-density housing and having plumbing in, so to speak, for charging infrastructure, as those new buildings go in, and they're doing their regular water, sewer, and electric infrastructure, so I think that's something that we should move forward with in our community, and I'm very excited to have you here, and look forward to visiting you and your shop when you open.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And just short and sweet, I mean, I'm not, I don't have a crystal ball, but this is certainly the business you want to be in, I think, for the future and early adopters, so, you know, I commend you for being bold and kind of putting your necks out there a little bit, you know, because it is early adopters, so I wish you the best of luck.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I've had multiple conversations with yourself around this, again, coming to the zoning bylaw meetings, et cetera, I'm happy to see this moving forward for you. I have no questions, your packet was complete, everything was there, my thunder got stolen about asking for the lawn to get cut, so now that you guys have approval on that, we're good.
Get that in writing, is it in writing?
I'm actually meeting a landscaper there tomorrow, so, it's important, it really is, it really is.
Alright, and this being a public hearing, we will open it up for any resident comment.
Motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to close the public hearing, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye as well, that is unanimous, we'll close the public hearing, what is the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we grant the used car dealer's license, class two, to Eco Auto of 623 Main Street.
Second.
Alright, we have a motion and a second for granting the license to Eco Auto LLC at 623 Main Street, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye as well, congratulations.
Congratulations, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Best of luck, guys.
Thank you.
Okay, moving right along, we will get-
Welcome to Tewksbury.
We will get into the residence section, seeing none, alright, so that brings us to item number four on our agenda, which is the Tewksbury Diversity Equity and Inclusion Committee appointments, Ms. Wellman?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have two student members that have been designated by the school committee to be appointed to our Diversity Equity Inclusion Committee, they were nominated by the school principal, at the time John Bernard, their names are Harshit Paul and Kim San Nguyen. Kim San is the younger sibling of a previous member, so it'll be great to have continuity, yes, and I believe she's a rising sophomore, or she could be junior, I'm not sure, so we will be meeting next Tuesday, so it is convenient to have them appointed this evening.
Absolutely, and just to refresh my memory, there was previously two, this is an expansion, this is just reappointed?
Correct, there are two seats, we never were able to fill the second student because senior projects started happening, and so it became a problem, so the second student was never confirmed.
Alright, fair enough, open it up for discussion. Nothing?
Motion to approve.
Fair enough, we have a motion, we have a second.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye as well, alright, we have two new appointees to the Tewksbury Diversity Equity Inclusion Committee.
Mr. Chairman, just as a point of personal privilege, they had the occasion to meet both students when they came to the community market, when the DEI chaired a booth with the frontline initiative, and they were really excited, enthusiastic, very interested in the committee, and I think they're gonna bring a lot of energy, so I'm very excited for this appointment, and I thank the board's appointment this evening.
Very good, awesome, please pass on our congratulations on your next meeting.
I will, thank you very much.
Absolutely, and we will move on to scheduling the special town meeting, Mr. Montori, can you speak to this one?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. It's that time of year to schedule the special town meeting in the fall, as we have done each year, in keeping with the tradition in the town, the first Tuesday in October, I'm asking the board to set October 4th at 7:00 PM as the date for special town meeting at the Tewksbury Memorial High School.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second for Tuesday, October 4th, at 7:00 PM, correct?
Correct.
Okay, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye as well, put that in, and we have another one, Mr. Montori, for you, the-
Opening and closing.
Opening and closing of the special town meeting warrant.
Yes, thank you, I'm also recommending that the board open the special town meeting warrant beginning July 20th, and closing at 4:30 PM on Friday, August 19th, 2022.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, all those in favor of opening the special town meeting warrant from July 20th to 4:30 on August, was that 14 or 19?
19th.
19th, 2022.
At 4:30 PM.
4:30 PM, thank you. Motion, second, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye as well, okay, put that in, and then one more for you, you might as well just put this in the town manager's section.
I know, so the next is regarding Main Street Liquors' suspension of their license for serving to underaged individuals, the board had first, for their first offense, gave them a one-day suspension with two inabeyance, but then they had a second offense within a two-week period, so the board actually made it an additional seven days, plus the two inabeyance, for nine days, which the owner is appealing both suspensions. The hearing at the ABCC is going to be on September 29th, I believe it was originally scheduled for the 26th, but it's been moved to the 29th, so I'd recommend that the board hold off on the suspension to take place on those, they were supposed to start July 28th, to hold off on them serving their suspension until after the appeal is heard by the ABCC.
Thank you, so we'll open that up for discussion, if anyone has anything.
Mr. Montori, do you know if their decision is immediate, or is their deliberation, do you know by chance?
I'm not sure how fast they make a decision, I think they could make it that day, depending how straightforward the case is, but I know there have been times where they've waited, you know, till their next meeting before the ABCC, so it could take about a month.
I know it's their right, I mean, I could see, especially maybe the second one, because it was a little bit extreme based on the first, but I'm a little bit surprised, appealing the first order, but it is their right, so, okay, thank you.
Other comments?
Mr. Montori, excuse me, through you, Mr. Chairman, to Mr. Montori, have you received any other comments or anything from the other businesses that were impacted by our decisions during those hearings?
Haven't heard anything, they had five days to appeal, and no one appealed it.
And so those other establishments will begin serving their, I think most of them had one-day suspensions.
One-day suspension with two inabeyance, yep.
Yep, July 28th.
Yes, which I think will, obviously, when we go to the ABCC on this appeal, the ABCC will take that into consideration, that at least the first suspension is consistent, so.
I believe it's also consistent with past practice of this body.
And it's consistent with the other one, correct.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Montori, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through the town manager, so, they'll go to the ABC, they'll have a hearing there as well, will they, in past, has the ABC asked for all the documents that we reviewed, while making that decision, will they get the same information that the police chief's recommendation came through, and all that will be turned over to them? It's just, it's a little surprising, since when we brought them in front of us, they came in front and didn't argue the point, they actually admitted to the things at a town meeting, so I just was wondering if that would be part of the process, if they get that.
Yes, so, absolutely will be, the plan is to have the police chief testify at the hearing, town council will present on the town's behalf, will provide all the information that the board had on the evening that they made their decision to include the reports from the officers, as well as information on the, that was sent out by the police department ahead of the underaged operations that establishments were well aware of, so, we're gonna lay all of that out, and town council will do that for us.
Okay, thank you.
Alrighty, so, I just want to reiterate, we take this very seriously, I know that there were some comments about the second offense because how close it was to the first offense, some people felt we may have been a little lenient, but this is not going away, it's basically being hauled until the ABCC finishes their proceedings, it'll come back, and then we will make a determination based off feedback from the ABCC's decision. With that, I would look for a motion to defer the suspension of this license.
Yeah, and I make, maybe, Mr. Chair, one more comment based on what you said, I think to your point, I think residents were maybe confused, like we're the authoritative figure, we were the authoritative figure with our vote, and I don't take back our vote, I don't think nine days was a slap on the wrist, actually, so, the point is, it's their right to appeal any local, city, town decision based on the alcohol policy, so they're doing everything in their power, and rightfully so, I think it's more of the nine days, but I was very surprised that they're appealing the one-day suspension, as I know, but I think it was maybe just confusion with some of the residents on how this is handled, and why they're going to the ABCC, and because they can, and that's what, you know, it's their right to do so, so, anyhow.
Absolutely.
So I'd look for a motion to postpone our decision made on such-and-such a date, do we have the date that we, what's the motion look like?
I would just make a motion to hold the suspension of Main Street Liquors until the ABCC appeal and decision is final.
So moved.
Alright, second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye as well, okay, and with that, we will go into the official town manager section.
I just have one thing that's actually not on the agenda, but it's pretty straightforward for the board to act on, based on the planning board's decision last night that they would like to fill the vacancy on their board due to the resignation of Eric Ryder, I would just ask if it was okay to post the opening, ask for applicants to submit an application to the Board of Selectmen and the Planning Board to review, and the application deadline would be on July 29th, which is a week from Friday, at 4:30, and once we receive all of the applications, we'll disseminate them to the Selectmen and the Planning Board for review and for future interviews, at a date chosen by both boards.
And just to clarify, so, Mr. Ryder has resigned from his position on the Planning Board, and the request is that we open it up for applications, as that decision-
Interested in residents.
Okay, so, open it up for applications from residents, as this will be a joint decision between the Select Board and Planning Board for appointing that, correct?
Correct.
Okay, open it up for discussion, anyone have any thoughts, questions, comments?
I just want to make a comment that I want to thank Mr. Ryder for his service to the community, this wasn't an easy choice for him to step aside, I understand that he tried his best to work through his workload, as well as that, and his other job was in a conflict, so that's the only reason he stepped aside, he did a wonderful job to the community, he should be commended, and I just want to thank him for his service.
Well said.
Well said, I would agree, yeah.
Okay, with that, if there's no other comments, I would look for a motion.
I'll make a motion to post the position, the open seat on the Select Board, uh, excuse me, on the Planning Board for appointment by the Select Board and the Planning Board at a future date to be determined.
Okay.
Okay.
Fair.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Do we need a date for those postings to be closed?
Noted, yeah, friendly amendment, for, to be, to open tomorrow and to close by July 29th at 4:30 PM, yeah, thank you, Mr. Kravman.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye as well, get that done, and Mr. Kravman, to your point, I believe the Planning Board also took an action to forego their seat on the school building committee, that Mr. Ryder has expressed interest in, so luckily for us, his expertise is not going away, he will be continuing to provide if he is appointed to that seat. And, Mr. Montori, was there anything else for the town manager section?
No, just to add on to what you just mentioned about the elementary school building committee, we'll add that to the board's next agenda, to look to add Mr. Ryder as a resident to the committee, the Planning Board has relinquished their seat, so we'll just recreate the seat as a resident seat at the next meeting, but that would be the plan at the moment.
Perfect, thank you. Alrighty, and no minutes at this time, board member reports, Ms. Wellman, want to start us off?
I'll be really brief, most meeting, most committees are not meeting in July, the Diversity Equity Inclusion Committee will be meeting on Tuesday, July 26th, next Tuesday, with Alex Ryder, to review the results, and folks are welcome to come and watch us as we go through Survey Monkey with her, and I wanted to also commend four young men who received their Eagle Scout achievement this weekend, Cyrus, well, they were honored for it, they received it during COVID, and they just did a tremendous job, Cyrus Rich, David Johnson, Alec Cranston, and Justin Flynn represent some of the best youth that we have in the community, and they, and their families were very proud, they did a great job, and it was a, it was a pleasure to be there, and be there with Mr. Kravman as well, so, thank you.
Absolutely, very large achievement, I did not last long enough in the Boy Scouts to make it that far, so, kudos.
Hard, it's really hard.
Mr. Kravman?
I have no board member reports, we haven't had any meetings since the last meeting.
Okay, Ms. Kelly?
I am gonna make a request to the board, and kind of through the chair, through Mr. Montori, so, I think the board's well aware that we're still dealing with some not-so-happy residents we got on the parcel, that's technically, well, it is in Andover, at the end of South Street, so, we haven't made much headway with the town of Andover, we did ask them for a face-to-face meeting with the residents, they did have some folks out and about, but for me, it's, you know, it's just excuses, they did respond back to a bunch of questions that some of the residents posted, so, Mr. Montori, even if anything can or can't be done, still, I'm gonna ask the board if we would make a motion to draft a letter in support on behalf of the board, requesting a meeting with the residents, or at least the director butters down there, so, to answer some questions, because they're just going back and forth, back and forth, back and forth, and we're not really making too much headway, so I'm extremely disappointed in the response of the elected, the officials in Andover, and I just, now it's time to be, you know, Mr. Not Nice Guy anymore, Mr. Montori, so I'd look for the board to, Mr. Montori, to draft a letter on behalf of the board, requesting a meeting with the residents down there.
So, keep me honest here, for you to draft, start drafting that letter, we don't need a motion, but if we were to kind of approve the letter to be sent, that would require the motion, correct? And what I'm thinking is, with the avoidance of kind of new business in board member reports, I would absolutely concur with everything you just said, and it needs to be addressed, I would want to kind of avoid, again, taking up new business at this time, well, I think we can start the process.
Yeah, we've been talking about this, and you've, Mr. Montori's been sharing the updates, I don't think it's new business, as a matter of fact, I'd consider it old business, so, I'm fine, Mr. Chair, I don't want to put you on the spot, but, you know, they're not getting any answers, you know, just empty phone calls, empty emails, Andover said, get a lawyer, there's nothing more we can do, and, you know, we have a lot of frustrated residents, and now I'm frustrated, you can tell, Ms. Wellman's been involved, which, this has been going on for six months, so I don't consider it new business, but I respect you being in the chair tonight to postpone it, but, yeah, we're just not getting any answers.
I agree, and it's unacceptable, so I would ask Mr. Montori if you want to start drafting that letter, and then we can get it on the agenda for the next one, review it, and get it pushed out.
I can do that, no problem.
Mr. Chairman, if I can piggyback on, Mr. Kelly, I fully support this notion, as I know that you do as well, and I would ask that this be made a future agenda item for the August 9th meeting, so that we can, you know, let residents know if they'd like to come and talk to it, they may choose to attend the meeting, but we can, you know, review the letter in advance, just, just-
Yeah, just to add, I don't, like even, you know, we, listen, we can have, Mr. Montori has been wide open with Mr. Sawick saying-
Absolutely.
We can talk to the residents, but they're not gonna hear much new, it's Andover's responsibility, it's been in Andover's boards, and I know it's sole litigation, the applicant is appealing it in court- And I know it's sole litigation. The applicant is appealing it in court, we get that. But there's still a lot of questions that the, we're not getting answers to, direct answers to, so, you know, that's, that's all.
Now, there's significant concerns justified on the part of the residents, and it needs to be addressed. And the frustration is, is, I know that Mr. Kelly...
At a boiling point.
You better believe it.
Completely concur. So we will get that on the agenda for our August ninth meeting. And, Mr. Montori, if you could draft that letter, it would be appreciated.
I can do that.
Thank you very much. Anything?
Thank you. That's all. Thank you very much, Mr. Chair.
So, of course, my computer decided to lock as we got onto that nice discussion.
Well, you're, well, you're, Becken, can we also add as a future agenda item warrant articles that the Select Board may want to bring forward?
Absolutely.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, so actually a great dovetail to Ms. Wellman's comment. For the residents, we're gonna be, the Select Board is going to be setting up a goals and objectives-setting meeting here in the near future. So look for more information on that. Additionally, we will be having a follow-on meeting to do some committee appointments, applicant reviews, watch for that process. I have no additional items for reports. Barring any other business, I would look for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Well, second that. Alright, all those in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye as well. We are adjourned. Thank you.